Good evening, everyone. We call Tuesday, March the ninth. Regular city council meeting is in order. At this time, I'd like to invite all who wish to participate in the council. You will rise for our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I would ask former councilman.
Yes, sir.
Trey Gammage to give our invocation.
Good morning, Father. Dear Jesus, we come to you today to give thanks for the service, the work, the people that you put in place to serve the city of Hartsville, for all the decisions that we make on tonight, on tomorrow, God, and the ones that we make our way through. I pray that you continue to push this city forward, God, and that you provide us with the leadership that we need to make hearts go great and keep it great, God. We thank you for all that you do and pray that you walk with us and guide every word and conversation that we have this evening and that it be a better than two in the city of Hartsville. Thank you for all you do and we appreciate who you are. We really appreciate it. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Thank you, please receive it. One more. Okay, the chair will entertain emotional way of reading of the approved minutes of February the ninth.
Seven, eight, nine, ten.
A discussion. Three, nine, all of everything, what we say now. Close by name. Yes, have it. Ten and four presentations this evening. Our first presentation we have is our is Donate Life Month. This is our fundamental presentation?
She should have already called in. Not when they were there. They didn't ring you.
Okay. We'll come right back in case she calls in. Social and Emotional Learning Day. Councilman Gammage is here. Former Councilman Gammage is here. Gosh. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Would you like to come forward and say a few words about Social Emotional Learning Day, please, sir?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good sir.
Social Emotional Learning Day is a proclamation that we actually presented last year for the first international S E L Day. And we went with our school in Bishopville and we got these proclamations for the city of Hartsville and Lee County as well. And this is actually very important and special to me even now because my work, my profession, my job is as a dean of students, but my emphasis is on is on social emotional learning. And that involves developing the whole student, not just academics, but are you aware of who you are? Do you have a self-identity? Do you have any relationship skills? And so I think it's very fitting on my last day to be going out in the month of March and to receive a proclamation for S E L Day because this is how my service will continue to move forward and what I'm going to be putting my heart into outside of my family. So I'm grateful that we're continuing to do a proclamation today and that we're celebrating S E L Day for the second time internationally. So I'm grateful to receive this and encourage parents, students, teachers, administrators to believe that the child being less stressed and overwhelmed is more important than academic learning. And I believe that too, and that's what we strive to do in education, and that's the work that I'm going to continue to do after this. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I think Disability Awareness Month in Hartsville.
Is there anyone here with a disability awareness?
Okay.
I'll let you know again.
Yes, please. We'll proclaim this is the month of March 2021's Disability Awareness Month in Hartsville. And then let us know if she calls back in. Next on the agenda are presentations. Mr. Caldwell, Mr. McGee, I'd like to present you. Will you hand that to Mr. McGee, please? Mr. Caldwell, y'all want to come up front and take a picture for the city?
You can not do that here, okay?
This is your completion of M E O training. So please, y'all both come together if you want to take a picture.
You know what to stand.
Y'all can talk.
Speech.
Speech.
What can you do in the background?
I don't want to take that long.
Mr. Vermaat, Charlie Vermaat would have been here to hear kind of emergency, but he's from the National Association of the Honors to present to you guys and does wish to come back and formally recognize you both.
Charlie, Charlie, welcome back. Great. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, with these two members getting their certificates, completing the academy, it makes the city of Hartsville an honor to all those who live in the city. All of our members have completed the institute.
Well, someone will call my mom and let her die in the honor.
I'll call it a night.
She won't believe it.
She won't see it, right?
Yeah. That's right. Don't get Bob started. He'll start telling a story about me here in the future.
Yes, sir.
All right. Monthly departmental update, tourism, Director of Tourism Communication of Main Street.
She ran away. Hang on. I get to be the dandy pig with the departmental.
Right, front and center. Yeah.
I'm glad I got back.
Have a right over here. Are you close down in the front?
No, no, I don't want to take your spot. I'm good. Well, I'm Lauren Baker, the Director of Tourism Communications and also Main Street Hartsville. I'm so blessed to be able to present on, no offense, direct reports, but what I believe is the best department that the city has on this day. I'm thankful that we all work together. So I will speak on the tourism aspect and I will try to keep this under under our five-minute time limit, but I am convinced, so we'll see how this goes. So the tourism department has many functions. The tourism department has many functions and one of our biggest functions is we service the special events department of the city. Most of you already know this. We have a special events coordinator. She works to permit all of our events throughout the city and I'll speak on those in the next slide, but she issues all the special event permits. She gets to plan and organize all of the city's sponsored events, which is a lot of fun and we get to see a lot of your faces and we love that so much. And she also manages the rentals of Walton Park and the additions, which are also very active to the city. We also have the Hartsville Museum. They are a bustling museum and they constantly have things changing around over there and I encourage you to go and visit them. I'm in chat with Matt and Andrea. They are wealth of knowledge for the city and they do a great job. We work together with Neptune Island on some marketing opportunities, specifically with grants. So we have a couple of grants that the tourism department handles. One is the tourism advertising grant, which comes from S C P R T. And what that is, is a matching grant of 50%. And it helps us to promote Hartsville to destinations that are 50 miles away or more, which is great. The P R T has a co-op program that we're a member of and that gives us additional advertising opportunities that are discounted and unique. So like last year, we did a big billboard promotion. It was a great savings there because we were able to get the word of Hartsville out in locations like Charlotte, Augusta, Freeville, Myrtle Beach, and Savannah, which is, that's a huge thing and it's cool, especially to see, I know the ones in Columbia, we all probably saw more than the others, but just to see a big Neptune Island billboard in Columbia, that's always fun. We also have ads with TripAdvisor, we got that program. And then one of my favorites is the Discover South Carolina Tourism Guide. And I have some copies in the key. I meant for the paper for you guys to look at. But it's got various rubber on the front to represent South Carolina and we have a nice third page ad all about Hartsville and that, as well as some boosted booster flag type things. So that's something that's fun that I've enjoyed being a part of. We also work with the Accommodation Tax Program with the city to help fund our tourism office next door, our online website, which serves many, many visitors that way as well. And it also helps to pay for the two billboards that you see on Highway 151. So those are exciting and those will be changed soon as well. One of our proud accomplishments of 2020 and 2021 is the completion of the Wayfinding Project, the near completion of the Wayfinding Project. We have 35 wayfinding signs scattered all throughout the city. That was a huge undertaking for the tourism department. It passed through the hands of, I think I was the fourth public information officer. I promised not to quit my job until this came through, so you know, still not going anywhere. So anyway, that's an exciting thing and one other arm of that is you'll see some downtown K I O also come out of that. Fortunately for us, our downtown is constantly changing and growing, which makes it difficult to say, okay, go, this is the time that we might have a couple of months that it would stay the same without changing. But anyway, that's exciting. And other plans that we have for this year, working with Adam in Hartsville Rec to do some welcome packets for his teams that are coming in, as well as just having something ready. You know, when we find out two days before an event at one of our hotels or the Center Theater or anything else, being able to hand them something to say, you know, we're Hartsville and this is what we're about. These are our special events. Most of you are very familiar with them. We have the Easter Extravaganza, which, little plug for that, we'll be doing that this month, March 27th, on a Saturday. We're doing something different this year. We're bringing this event to four parks throughout the city. So it's normally located on Coker's campus, but we're constantly talking about blockability and how can we bring events to people. So this is a change that came because of COVID, but it's something that I think is very neat. So we'll be having 1,000 eggs in Pride Park, Byerly Park, Berry Park, and Walton Park. We'll have a food truck at each one of those to help encourage more people to come out. I'm not going to tell you which favorite food truck might be at which location. We're going to keep that on the down low. You have to visit all parks to find, to find someone to tell you that it's their pleasure to serve you. Anyway, so that's happening on March 27th and I encourage you to go out to those parks and help us greet people. We'll be, we'll have staff out there from 11 to 1 welcoming people and kind of giving you instructions, but I think it would be great to have you guys there as well. So if you want to help hide a thousand Easter eggs, let them know and we'll put you to work too. We also are starting that with downtown block parties, which is something that is the focus of Main Street Hartsville, but our tourism office also, we all work together. And Farmer's Market, those will be starting there April through December on the second Saturday downtown. We've sent out some surveys to our Main Street partners to just kind of gauge their feeling on these events and it sounds like they're excited to get that traffic back downtown today. We also have the Screen on the Green Events in Berry Park, along with National Night Out. Everyone knows Trips on the Street and that's what our picture is on here. And I sure hope in October, we can have those thousands and thousands of children lining the sidewalks of downtown. Something new that our department is, well, not new, but something renewed, I guess, that our department is doing is working with, to create a Veterans Day Celebration Committee. So we'll be working towards that for the November Veterans Day, partnering with several organizations that have previously been a part of this to help make it better for everyone. So we're excited about that. And Hartsville for the holidays, that's a theme for itself, because that's a great event series with our parade and our downtown open house. Lots of exciting things happening there. And I wanted to point out, I've definitely pulled the wrong number of times up here. Okay, anyway, in 2019, I think the city, we had, I think it was 69 total permanent events. I mean, 2020, we were still able to have total 35 permanent events. A lot of those were organized by us. I think in 2020, we saved four events, but it was actually, like we count Fire Market as one, even though we have nine of those every year. So anyway, where other cities shut down and maybe didn't necessarily find creative ways to work around, I think Hartsville and because of City Council, you guys supported us to to help keep people safe, but still find ways to have fun. So that was really important and the residents really appreciated that. The Communications Department, this is always fun for me. I started as a public information officer, as most of you are aware. So this is kind of my passion is being able to just sit and talk to people, which is probably why my presentation might be a little long right now. Sorry about that. Anyway, so one of our huge things is promoting the city's brand and working to create consistency. That's something that we'll be working towards this year. We actually, fun fact, have 10 social media pages, just Facebook plus three Instagram accounts. So keeping that consistency between departments is a challenge, but it's a lot of fun and it helps us work with all departments, which is great for our team next door. It helps to improve communication, which I think is great. We get to work with our local media. I'm a spokesperson for the city and I love getting, getting to deal with all of our lovely media partners. They're, they're great. Hartsville is truly fortunate to have such great people in the media representing us and not every city can say that. So, so I'm thankful. Makes my job easier. Resident engagement, this is one huge thing that I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of the ways that we engage with our residents. We have, like I said, 10 social media pages. We also have the City Bot, which was a huge project that I know Trey helped to bring us, I know you're glad to see this still happening. But City Bot is our, a way that residents can text into the city. The information is up there. We did a build stuffer on it this month and we've seen great responses from people that they, they're able to get a personal response automatically. City Bot immediately texts back to them. And if it's not something that City Bot can necessarily help them with, they give them an adequate response to say, someone like me will respond to them later. So that's a great thing to promote. Does anyone want to guess what the number one reported thing in City Bot is?
Hotels.
Yes. How do you know? Fortunately, I get to tell them that while it's not our road, I can help them report it to the correct person. So anyway, that's always fun. And then we also still have the Code Red Emergency Alert System. It's not utilized a ton and the intent of that is because we wanted to really get people's attention in the event of a disaster, that we needed that. So thankful that we don't have to use that. Not so much a lot. These are our 10 Facebook pages that we have. The city of Hartsville, Visit Hartsville, and Main Street Hartsville are also on Instagram. And we have Twitter, but it's not very. And then the final leg of operation that is happening next door in the key is Main Street Hartsville and this is something that I am so passionate about. I love getting to work with our downtown businesses and welcoming them to Hartsville, whether they're brand new and just moving here, or if they're local to the area, but just dabbling into the business world. It's, it's been a great experience so far. So we plan ribbon puddings and I've definitely encouraged you that when you see that top group on your account to come out. It means a lot to the businesses to, to be able to talk to city council and, and have staff there. So that's our mission for 2021 is to be able to have better attendance at these. The ribbon puddings, we help them with like transitional type signage. You'll see some of that going up downtown this week for our businesses that are transitioning to something new, but it might be a little while. And then we help with the fiber grants as well. In the Main Street South Carolina world, I have now learned that I've gotten to mingle with them. They're apparently known as the Event Planning Department, but it really is so much more. But that is, that's a big aspect of what we do with the block parties and the farmer's market and new ideas that we have to help to draw people in to help run our town businesses. We definitely are always building relationships with people. I love to get phone calls from our business owners because they have such great insights into what's going on. And a lot of times that translates outside of the downtown district as well. So while Main Street Hartsville's focus is downtown, I think that it personally helps me better to serve the city as a whole. And as the rest of family, to cliche, it is our pleasure to serve you, to quote one of our very favorite establishments. We do welcome and appreciate your ideas. Anytime you'd like to volunteer, we always welcome that as well and it's really important to us and it helps us serve all of Hartsville. Thank you for the time.
Okay, well, thank you. Mr. Manager, anything for updates?
A few things. Do you want to say anything to the supervisor or do you want to say that right now?
Mr. Gammage? Gammage? Yeah, yeah.
He can say a few things for five seconds.
I mean, he's here, right?
Well, yeah, a few things. Do you want to go and manager update or do you want? He's getting busy, like he wants to get out of here, but to say.
You've got a crying baby at home.
Oh, that's in the morgue. All right, so if you, if you would please come up to the, coming behind, I guess, I'm sure. Former council member has always extended the privilege of coming behind the, the, so I'd ask if my peers would please come and join us.
Marcellus.
So we have a couple of things that we would like to present you with. Each one of those. So this is, as customary, I want to present you with your testimony. You also have a plaque representing your service here. And then we have a proclamation that we entered, oh, excuse me, proclamation. Mr. Trey Marcellus Clifton Gomage. We have a proclamation that, that we want to recognize your service. So I don't think I'm alone and we would invite your lovely bride up here, but she's filming for family back home. We certainly are going to miss you. You have, you have brought a special element to this council and to the city and your passion for service. Certainly, as I was telling your wife earlier, this is not the end for you. Maybe here for now, but fingers crossed you guys will be back. Either be back here soon, someday, or you'll be representing what you have started here. And either way, that would be great. I didn't know. Do you want to say a few words in your remarks?
Absolutely. I was not expecting all this, you know, for sure.
That's funny because we got an email that said.
I mean, it honestly is very humbling because I know we've had amazing, illustrious council members that have served a long time to come and get some of these things. So the fact that I'm put in the same class with legends like Burmese Wilson is, is just so humbling to me. And the fact that I came to Hartsville fresh out of college, didn't know anybody but my supervisor, now I'm leaving here with a wife, a home, a son, and a man. I've been able to learn so much from each of you on the city. I can think about a specific time we had had a moment that was passionate, that was about service, that was about helping, that helped me be a better person. And so I've learned so much about myself. I've learned so much about the city and I've learned so much about what it means to serve in my time. So to have these proclamations and awards to come back, I mean, it's, I don't need it, but it means so much that y'all have given it to me. And so my, my mission and my purpose in life is to serve. Like I really truly love to serve people. I mean, that's what I'm going to continue to do, started with my family and then with my school and people in education. So again, to be recognized for service, I don't believe that there's a higher honor. And so I'm grateful to the city of Hartsville. I'm sad to go, but I've seen us grow so much progressiveness, being so dynamic, having conversations, making different decisions that were not on the table three or four years ago. And so it's just an honor and a privilege to be here. I'm humbled to serve and I appreciate you all for your love and support, welcoming me to a city of Hartsville. I'm a place where I can always call from. So thank you for that.
So we had to call your parents and ask them what your whole name was.
Better fit.
You know, from a design element, like it really paid me to change your name smaller to make it fit, like it should all be the same font size. But the clerk said, we can't put Carmen's husband down. You have to. So we put your name.
I got a lot of it. Thank you for fitting.
But it bugged me out. Hopefully at that point your name.
Right, right, right.
It regrets Carmen's husband.
They'll, they'll, they'll learn pretty soon. They'll meet me in life, but once they meet Carmen, they'll get it done.
Oh, that's okay.
I appreciate y'all and I'm definitely going to miss the jokes. Mets, I will not miss the executive session. So it is, it's an honor.
Well, we're going to miss you, both of y'all. So please come back also and visit and, you know, represent well. We know you well and do big things.
I know you're back soon.
Yeah.
We all get together real quick for a picture of where.
Yeah, use them myself.
Not really sure if I can. I'm about to take them down.
All right. Picture shot up there.
Don't worry.
It was a trophy.
I don't want to touch it.
There wouldn't be a better way to go out.
All right, I just checked on one, the Saturday. Everybody said, you never come back.
Thank you.
You come back for more awards?
For what?
That's for somebody else. I'm serious.
My, my, one more active remark. I didn't see Mr. Pete Delaney coming in, who, who has been a great representative of the city and also lives in District One. He has put his name and had to run for city council. And so that is something that's really special to me as well, to know that person that will perceive me as oxygenated and as ram is someone that I absolutely will vouch for and stand behind, choose to continue to serve for the city of Hartsville. So that's my last, my last remark. Peace out, y'all.
So this is a very special proclamation that the city, that the city park presented for us for Flossie's funeral. We cannot attend and so I want to say thank you for that. We're going to send this to the family.
Courtney and Amy have asked us to hold on to that till they come here for her celebration.
Oh, good.
In late summer or fall, but I wanted you to read enough of it tonight to be entered into the record.
Sure.
They will watch that on YouTube.
I'm going to ask if Johnny will do that because you're the only one here that, did you, did anybody, Bob, did you serve there? And Johnny's, you know, passionate. Um, and Johnny's, you know, passion is, um, the school system as well. And Flossie did double work in serving on both of them. Did you read that into the record, please?
There again, um, her passion has really affected me. Uh, Flossie taught me seventh grade and, uh, of course I served with her on council. And then she, of course, uh, was a administrator at the district level, school district level, and also a teacher there. She, you know, triple, triple influenced me as well as a great citizen. His proclamation, whereas Flossie see, Floss, excuse me, whereas Flor C. Flossie Hopkins faithfully served City of Hartsville as mayor from 1993 until 2001. And whereas during her two years of public service, she made great contributions, two terms of public service, she made great contributions to the growth and development of the city of Hartsville, including the 1996 All-America City Prestigious Designation. And whereas former Mayor Flossie Hopkins passed away on January 25th, 2021, and whereas the mayor and city council of City of Hartsville, South Carolina, desire to recognize her dedication, leadership, and contribution to the people of the city of Hartsville. And whereas the mayor and city council hereby wish to express to her family their deep gratitude for her great service. And whereas the mayor and council would like to extend to her family, friends, and colleagues their profound expressions of sympathy and shared sense of loss in the passing of the honorable Mayor Flor C. Flossie Hopkins.
Well, we'll get this, Madam Parker, you'll take this for them. Um, I got to see Flossie the day that she left Hartsville. And that was a special thing for me. I, I grew up across the street where she kind of lived in, in later years. And, uh, she always, as I mentioned in that, um, the article about her service, she always gave really great advice, um, much like Bob. Um, my favorite Flossie story was, she said, um, and she was kind of, kind of saying, don't, don't get, you know, don't, don't let it grind you down. She said, honey, they used to call me all the time and say, you know, they didn't pick up my trash this week. And she said, oh, that's okay. She said, when I get back to city hall, I'll see that they're fired. And they said, no, no, that's not what we were, and she said, no, no, you, this is true. Sharon knows it. No, no, I, I mean, that's, you paid your, your just taxes and this person clearly has not lived up to their expectations. And those three kids don't need to eat anyway. And by the end of the conversation, the person had blubbered their trash, you know, to the dump themselves. Uh, but she was, only Flossie could pull that off, you know? And, and I just would get tickled when she would, would tell that story. Um, another note that I think is important is not only did Flossie, she did so many things that started, you know, uh, the development, uh, or continued and started in a lot of ways, developed in Hartsville. We all know that she was a part of the All-America City campaign the first time. But she was in the inaugural class, Ily, um, Institute for Mayor's Design, a Fellowship for Mayor's Design, which, um, I, I don't know that I would have ever expected Flossie to, you know, to be a part of. And she was in the very first class. And that just speaks to how, um, many different talents and passions she had when it came to city design and city building. So, um, what a wonderful lady. We're certainly going to miss her. And, uh, you know, we brought Vernis tonight too, and Vernis is another one that, um, really going to miss. Um, it's hard to, hard to look down there and, and hear him say, you know, he's ready for, he's ready for his raise. So you got to take that up with Johnny. Johnny? All right, so, uh, Mr. Manager, is there anything that you wish to add?
Yeah, just a few, a few updates for you guys. Um, being the first time we're all back together, so welcome everyone. Glad to have them back face to face. Um, you might have noticed we have a few scooters sitting around town. Um, these are boot, bird scooters. Uh, so that's something that actually Mel kind of spearheaded and started talking to them. And that's something that places like Charlotte has. So we're trying to do things that are different. And fortunately, we've worked through and they've been great partners with us to get everything we need from them. But that's something that we're now seeing the Coker students and the Governor's School students using. And just scooting around town, which is just, it adds another level to something like that. That's part of it.
I can't take credit for spearheading that. I'm not really sure how this whole thing happened.
You wrote a lot of emails, so that was not apparent.
I think they saw a comma in the wrong place and they were thinking 80,000, it's 8,000. Um, but you know, I, I do know how their operation works. And while we don't know the, the kind of identity of the local entrepreneur who's heading up the service here, um, I can promise you, if it wasn't for that individual, um, who we, you know, they won't tell us for privacy reasons, we certainly wouldn't have this in the city. Um, doesn't matter about emails and who called and all that. Um, it's a substantial investment of tens of thousands of dollars. Uh, and, uh, so whoever that person is, we certainly are indebted to. And excited to see, I mean, Coker kids are riding everywhere. Um, I expect Governor's School kids will be riding everywhere, although I've been told they're not supposed to be. All of them, and that's it. Good luck.
Well, that's, that's exciting.
Yeah.
Um, and then also just a few more updates. Uh, so I wanted to let you know there's a water park. Uh, we did start construction on the new food beverage building. So no longer will they be cooking in the food truck trailer, they're going to be cooking in the building. It's the last economic or the capital improvements that we, you guys authorized for us to spend, that's underway. And also the airport building is well underway. And so I did invite you guys to come and go up there and see it and see what's going on with that. Um, budget is well underway. Um, staff and I have been meeting about revenue. We're going to be meeting individual departments starting next week to start talking about things. And that is where I do want to see, we've talked about this before, but I believe it is a good idea for us to have a budget workshop for us to go through and call the council and, and talk you through the finance committee chairman, uh, including everyone in that. And so I believe that April 6th is our next workshop date. And I will, I'll invite somebody for that to see if that works out or if we can do another day at April 6th. The first reading for budget being made, so it's a perfect time for us to spend some time there. We'll buy you some food if you need to, so to sit there and go through the budget. And I think this year, we have a lot to be proud of for what the city has done and accomplished over the year, especially through COVID. So I think it's a good idea for us to showcase that and to, uh, really talk about what have we done, lessons learned.